Good morning. Welcome to the June 4th Board of Supervisors meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order, and we're going to begin with roll call.
Suizmo Brandal?
Here.
Suizmo Mendez?
Here.
Suizmo Quintero?
Here.
Suizmo Pacheco?
Here.
Chairman Magsick?
And I am here.
All present, thank you.
First item on the agenda is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. And today I have the pleasure of introducing Pastor Jim. He is the head of the Church of Shaver Lake. The church was established in 1985 and is an interdenominational Christian Bible-based fellowship. Immediately after the creek fire, his congregation raised and donated money to help pay for the drilling of over 100 new water wells lost in the fire. Pastor Jim is also a volunteer on the search and rescue team. He is married and has three amazing children, who are all adults, and 13 grandchildren. He also has been married for 53 years. And somewhere in the Bible, I think it talks about the importance of being salt and light in the world. And I can tell you that Jim is an incredible example to all residents here in Fresno County. He is a servant leader, and I'm honored to have him here today to pray for Fresno County. Please stand with me.
Before I pray, can I just say one thing? I want to thank this board and this, that you guys run this county. It's the best county in the world, I think. This, I know it has its problems and challenges, but gave this 18-year-old kid a chance when I hitchhiked up here 53, four years ago with six bucks in my pocket, and gave me a chance to make something and not only in the ministry, but in business and so on over the years. So, thank you for running the best county, you know, and what I think in the world. All right, enough of that. Father, again, we thank you that you love us and have a plan for each one of us and that you care about your people and that you created the heavens, earth, and everything in it, and yet you're moved by the prayer of a child. We thank you that you're that big and that great. And we just love you and we trust you for the outcome in each one of our lives. I thank you for, again, for this community and these supervisors and their staff who do a tremendous job of caring for us as people. And so we just go back to you and trust your word for that you said very simply, "He's shown us, O man, what is good and what the Lord requires of us: to do justice, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with our God." And we thank you for that, and bless these guys as they continue on and their staff. In Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We now move to item number one, approve agenda.
Any members on the board want to make modifications to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries unanimously.
We now move to item number two, approve consent agenda to item number 16 through 48.
All right, any members wishing to poll any consent agenda items?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I need to poll item number 37, and the reason is I need to recuse myself, so when you hear that item, I'll step out of the room.
Got a problem, we're going to poll item 37. Any others from members? Anyone in the public wishing to poll any of the consent agenda items? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. The remainder, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, item 37 will be heard after four, item four. We now move to item number three. Under Chairman Magsick, proclaim June 2024 as Elder Independent Adult Abuse Awareness Month in Fresno County.
Excellent, and we have representatives from DSS here, and because so many members up here on the Board of Supervisors are elderly, I thought it was appropriate to hear this item here today. So, Sonya, the floor is yours.
I really appreciate that, and I want to highlight, well, we have members of DSS, Orellia Gomez and Angie, who are our deputy and a program manager of Adult Protective Services. We are also here with Fresno Madera Area Agency on Aging and Valley Caregiver Center. So, Michelle Dubois, who is Executive Director of Valley Caregivers, Susanna Rodriguez, Program Director, Susan Bassin, their Program Manager, and then Hillary Bennett, representing FM AAA. These are essential partners in combating adult abuse. We actually, all the long-term care facilities are investigated, Valley Caregivers, the other instances of adult abuse are investigated by APS. So this is a strong partnership and an important partnership. So we're all here presenting to you and really appreciate your acknowledging the Adult Abuse Awareness Month. And with that, we have a short video to share and highlight some key data and ways to combat adult abuse.
I don't think people in this country like to talk or think about it.
Most people think of elder abuse as somebody beating an older person.
This is one of the most invisible crimes.
It's very difficult for me because I'm very friendly, and I think that that's why they took advantage of that.
They'd always steal everything, whether it was money or jewelry.
I think one of the things that we bump up against with elder abuse is shame, embarrassment, capacity.
There is elder abuse occurring in probably every zip code in the United States.
Elder abuse is a dark mark on our humanity.
We're all going to get old, and we're all going to be potential victims.
We're so conscious of all.
According to the National Council on Aging, one in 10 older Americans are abused each year. Approximately 13% of Fresno County's population are elder adults. Fresno County's Adult Protective Services received over 1,500 confirmed reports of elder independent abuse in 2023. This was a 28% increase compared to 2022. Fresno County partners with Valley Caregiver Resource Center's Fresno Madera Long-Term Care Ombudsman Program. Ombudsman volunteers investigate reports of elder abuse for residents of licensed long-term care facilities. They make monthly unannounced visits to these facilities and work to resolve complaints made by or on behalf of residents. Our elder and dependent adult population face many forms of abuse, including physical abuse, sexual abuse, financial exploitation, and abandonment. Some indicators of that abuse include unexplained bruises or injuries, changes in behavior, or changes in their financial and important documents. There are two ways to report abuse based on the living situation of the person being abused. First, if they are not placed in a residential care facility, you would reach out to Fresno County's Adult Protective Services at the care line. Please provide as much information as possible, including the name, age, date of birth of the person being abused, and details on the allegation. As a reminder, all referrals are confidential. When reporting abuse for someone residing in a licensed care facility, reports can be made to the ombudsman crisis line. The information needed will include the resident's name and room number, the facility name, and details on the allegation and perpetrator.
Well, thank you very much. In observance of adult abuse awareness, we all are wearing purple or wearing purple ribbons. June 15th is Adult Abuse Awareness Day, and we really appreciate your time to give us an opportunity to make our community more aware. There have been increases in adult abuse over the past few years with all the isolation of our elderly, making sure that people are aware and know how to report it, whether it's somebody who's living in a long-term facility or somebody living in home. And what we do on a daily basis, educate, investigate, and then help our adults, elderly and dependent adults navigate through these situations. So thank you very much for this acknowledgement, and I really want to appreciate our partners for being there and doing this with us every single day.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on this one?
Good to see Michelle and Hillary, some of my friends from FM AAA, who we meet with on a monthly basis. So, thank you for promoting this today.
Just wanted to say thank you for all you do, as there's a lot of folks, elderly folks in need of help, assistance, and direction, and I really want to thank you for being proactive in serving our community.
All right. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this proclamation? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, and I'll make a motion for approval of the proclamation. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Please step forward, and we will get a picture with you.
We now move to item number four. Under Chairman Magsick, proclaim June 2024 as Family Renewfication Month in Fresno County.
And we have Sonya here and members of her team to present this item.
And I'm going to hand this over to Sean Peavande, who is our Program Manager in Child Welfare Services in our Family Reunification Unit, to introduce the team and do a presentation.
Morning, Chairman, and members of the board. Sean Peavande, Division Chief, No Child Welfare Branch. Also present is our DSS Director, Sunny Bagay, Deputy Director Dalvin Baker, Social Work Supervisor, Anna Lee Montavo, Social Work Supervisor, Myrna Tome, and Social Worker Christina Morris. We want to start by thanking you, thanking your board for recognizing June as Family Renewfication Month. It is a true honor to bring this proclamation forward, as DSS aims to continue to support families to successfully reunify with their children. We would like to thank the incredible efforts and dedication of all who are involved in the family reunification process. Not only are they helping reunify families, they're restoring hope, rebuilding connections, and fostering healing into our communities. Today, DSS would like to highlight a story of one of our families who has reunified. Ms. Marshall's journey with the department started in 2022. Social Worker Christina worked with Ms. Marshall by providing her supportive measures and resources. Ms. Marshall showed remarkable progress. She addressed the issues that led her children to be removed and proved she could protect and care for them. After 18 months, her case dismissed, as Ms. Marshall successfully reunified with her children. Even after her case closed, Ms. Marshall stayed in touch with Christina, sharing joyful updates and pictures of her kids during holidays, birthdays, and school events. One of the pictures she shared was a welcome home sign she created for her children that has inspired us as a department to call a reunification celebration the Welcome Home Celebration, which will take place on Friday, June 21st, from 3:30, 5:30, and we have your invitations today. Ms. Marshall continues to thrive as a loving and dedicated parent to her four children. Christina, the department saw Ms. Marshall's transformation firsthand, and she has become a true inspiration, an example of resilience and commitment to her family. Ms. Marshall and family could not be here today. However, Christina will be reading a message from Ms. Marshall. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christina, and I was a social worker assigned to Ms. Marshall, and I had the privilege to work with her. The message from Ms. Marshall states, "I am writing this to express my appreciation towards the Department of Children, Family Services, for their support and dedication to me reunifying with my children. It was a long journey for us, but hard work and the love I have for my children made it worth it. In the end, my children are very happy to be home, and their foster parents have become family outside of the department. What started out as a storm for us came followed by a rainbow. I encourage parents to fight for their children, follow rules, and be patient with their worker. They're generally here to help and want the best for all children. Sincerely, Ms. Marshall."
Thank you.
Thank you very much for acknowledging foster care, our family reunification. Everything we do in child welfare is important, but I will tell you, the work these guys do on a daily basis to not only keep kids safe, but truly work with the families to actually reunify, that is 90% of our job. And I have a couple of supervisors here and a worker that have done such a great job working with our families, who, these are our top two reunifiers, I'm going with that, you guys, that really, that intense work with the families, trying to figure out, how can we, what can we do to help? How do we walk with you to address safety for sure, but also make families stronger and reunify? It is incredible work these guys do every single day. So really appreciate the opportunity to highlight it, celebrate the success, and acknowledge them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments for our staff members on this? I can tell you that, really appreciate the work of the Department of Social Services. There's so many different nuances, and it is the largest program, both staff-wise and dollars spent by the county. And when I think about children that have an opportunity to be reunified with biological parents, family members, identity is tied to your family. And so, not only are there benefits there economically, but also there are benefits there socially, and for those kids to continue to develop and providing tools to parents who maybe have had challenges in the past, I think is fantastic. So, well done. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this proclamation? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. I'll make a motion for approval of the proclamation. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Please step forward and receive the proclamation.
We now take up the item that was pulled by Suizmo Brandal, item 37. Under Public Health, approve and authorize Chairman Execute Amendment 1 to agreement with the Kirkland Foundation to modify the scope of services affected upon execution with no change to the term of November 28, 23 to November 27, 2025.
And I'll note for the record that Supervisor Brandal has not participated in this item. So, any members wishing to have a full report on this item? It's pretty straightforward. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on item 37? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and bring it back to our board.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes four with one abstention.
One recusal, correct?
Or I should say, recusal?
Yes.
Or do you want, okay, recusal.
Thank you. We now return to our regular calendar. Under the Assessor Recorder, item five, adopt resolution to affiliate program technician to Step 5 position with extra help, retiree Norma Sutton.
All right, Paul, do you want to introduce this item, or should, we can have Paul introduce it? Perfect. Paul, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everybody. It's a beautiful day outside and a beautiful day inside, too. Norma Sutton has worked for my department since she was 19 years old. She retired this year. She knows more than anybody else. And because of the high turnover we have, because of the emergencies, what we ended up with, you know, closing the tax roll, I asked very candidly, the authorization to break her back before the 180 days are over. So she has a vast knowledge, very critical, you know, to our department. Her primary responsibilities after she returns to work as extra help are to track and work on the Prop 19. Prop 19 is the most terrible thing that ever happened to our county, to our state, transfers and train new staff on the Prop 19 and various other work. The goal of the department is to have full-time trained staff who are able to perform the necessary work, so extra help employees are not needed. But currently, with vacancies and high turnover, there is an urgent need for extra help employees, especially Norma. Norma, we estimate that if she stays and works for us for 960 hours, it'll cost her no more than $28,000. And we have the money in the budget.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Any questions for our Assessor Recorder on this item? All right, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for action.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for staff's recommendation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
We now move to item number six. Under County Council, conduct first hearing to amend master schedule fees charged and recover costs ordinance by amending Section 600, County Council, subsection 601, renaming legal services as attorney services and increasing the fee rate for such services to $1.69 per hour for each attorney. And subsection 602, adding child welfare services, legal assistance services at a new fee rate of $72 per hour for each CWS legal assistant. Waive reading of the ordinance in its entirety and set second hearing for June 18, 2024. Designate County Council to prepare a fair and adequate summary of the proposed ordinance and direct the clerk of the board to post and publish the required summary in accordance with Government Code, Section 25124B1.
Mr. Cedarborg, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm available to answer questions. These increases are the normal increases resulting from salary and step increases in the office and an adjustment that we made to cover separately an hourly rate for the CWS workers that the auditor controller would like to see in order to help with the cost plan.
And again, as stated in our staff report, the last time there was an update done, it was, I think, June of 2022, correct?
I believe so, yes, two years ago.
Any questions for staff? Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for action.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for staff's recommendation. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
We now move to item number seven. Under Internal Services, conduct first hearing to amend the master schedule fees charged and recover costs, Section 3800, General Services, where subsections 384, 3809, 3810, 3811, 3812, 3813, 3814 are to be amended. Waive the reading of the ordinance in its entirety and set the second hearing for July 9, 2024. Designate County Council to prepare a fair and adequate summary of the proposed ordinance and direct the clerk of the board to post and publish the required summary in accordance with Government Code, Section 25124B1.
All right, Ed, floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ed Hill, your Chief Operating Officer and Interim Director of Internal Services and Chief Information Officer. We have a minor alteration to announce prior discussing our item today. Attachment A to this agenda item was previously mis-titled as Information, excuse me, Information Technology Services instead of General Services. They aren't being distributed now, and a red line attachment A will correct this. We'll also make copies available for the public. This item and the following items are the annual review of the ISD rates for the Internal Services Fund divisions. The General Services Master Schedule of Fees represents changes, or excuse me, charges across three internal service funds, fleet, facilities, and security. It represents the fees necessary to fully recover expected costs within those operational units based on expected services levels as required for an internal services fund. You will see a mix of changes in individual rates, which are based on changes in costs and/or changes in requests from our county departments. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, just for me, one quick question I have. The, like, there were a few decreases, generally, a lot of increases looking at Attachment A, but badge identification, what was the big contributor to the decrease there?
So, the decreases, especially related to anything that is information technology, is on how the rates for the overhead for the Internal Services Fund is calculated. We changed that process to more accurately capture the distribution of the costs throughout the county. They used to be charged based on IT usage, which not all departments use IT services. So the new method distributes those costs more equitably, and in doing so, it decreases ID, or, excuse me, IT rates.
Okay. Any other questions for staff, from any members? All right, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? I know everybody studies our rate schedule very closely, so. Seeing no comments, I'm going to close the public portion, bring it back to our board for action. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, that's unanimous. All right, next item.
We now move to item number eight. Under Internal Services, conduct first hearing to amend the master schedule fees charged and recover costs, Section 4300, where subsections 4302, 4303, 4304, 4305, 4308, 4309, 4310, 4313, 4314, 4315, 4317, 4320, 4321, 4322, 4323, 4326, 4327, 4328, 4329, 4330 are to be amended. Waive the reading of the ordinance in its entirety and set the second hearing for June 18, 2024. Designate County Council to prepare a fair and adequate summary of the proposed ordinance and direct the clerk of the board to post and publish the required summary in accordance with Government Code, Section 25124B1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next item is for our Information Technology Services fees. This item, like the last, are part of our annual review of ISD rates. The rates included in this fund focus specifically on services and system dedicated to information technology, ranging from the labor to support the systems to actual charges by the vendors for software licensing and electronic storage. Again, they represent the fees necessary to recover expected costs for those units. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff on this one? All right, again, significant decreases in many different areas, but again, the same reason why is same as before with the other item. You're having to try to assign actual costs to different departments, and in some cases, there's fees that go up because maybe there's a more equitable way to do that, and in many cases, the fee goes down because maybe you're now spreading that fee to other departments or other departments that maybe weren't paying that fee before. So, okay, makes sense to me. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for action.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second. The attorneys over here are like nervous. They're kind of wondering why we're not asking them any questions. It's pretty straightforward.
She's just trying to get out of here.
Oh, I see. All right. Very good. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
Well, we do brief, so it's not like seeing this for the first time.
We now move to 8.1. Under Public Works and Planning, approve and authorize Chairman Execute Indemnification in Defense Agreement with Stomulus Incorporated and OPA Pistachios as required by condition of approval of unclassified conditional use permit number 3709 and variance application number 4112, or provide alternate direction.
Good morning, I'm David, excuse me, David Randall from Current Planning, Public Works and Planning. Your board approved CUP 3709 on March 5, 2025, also known as the Stamos Project. A condition of approval required the applicant sign an indemnity agreement with the security to protect the county from legal exposure. The county standard agreement for the situation has been provided to you, but the applicant has requested one significant modification, which would involve funding the escrow account in stages. Your direction is requested on that point.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I could add to that, in this situation, the agreement calls for the applicant to pay our attorney's fees for our separate counsel as they come due because we can't use the same attorney due to a conflict. And they would like to make an initial deposit of $50,000 and pay the other 100 as trial approaches. If the board is okay with that direction and gives it to staff, we'll modify the agreement slightly and submit that modified agreement for the chair's signature.
Does counsel, do you have any concerns with that, or do you think that provides adequate protection for the county if we do it that way?
Under these circumstances, we think that provides adequate protection. We often keep the cash to protect the county against a failure to pay attorney's fees. They're going to be paying them as they come due under this agreement and to protect the county against any attorney's fees award so we don't have to go chasing the applicant afterwards. Before we get to any point where the attorney's fees award would be applicable in order to maintain the approval, they would deposit that amount.
Fair enough. Any questions for staff on this one?
Mr. Chairman, I, this is a company in District One. I would vouch for the credibility of this company. This is a company that came before this board several weeks ago and has suffered tremendous delays from sources outside of the county. They've contributed greatly to their community, and I have no issue with the modified agreement with County Council.
Excellent. Any other comments from board members? Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and bring it back.
I would move for staff's recommendation.
Well, maybe.
With the modified payment schedule.
Correct.
All right, we've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes unanimously.
We now move to item number nine. Board of Superior Committee Reports and Comments.
All right, we'll start with Supervisor Pacheco. Do you have any?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Quintero?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did receive a text over the weekend and a call, made a call. Just wanted to report that former Lieutenant Governor Cruz Bustamante's mother passed away recently, and I'll be bringing forward a journey memory on the family's behalf. So did speak with him, and of course, he wanted me to make sure that I let the rest of the board know. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Mendez?
Went Sunday to the Riverdale Portuguese celebrations, hundredth anniversary. They even had any past queens, I don't know, maybe I'm just talking to Brian here that knows in Bernice. Past queens, they actually, if they wanted to, and there was two that were in their eighties, that actually went on golf carts in the parade. So that was pretty interesting. Worst thing about it was I know them both well. So that was a, it was a great celebration, and like I said, it was a hundredth year anniversary.
And Supervisor, didn't you have a birthday?
Yeah, I did.
Oh.
On Sunday.
Well, happy birthday, Supervisor. You know, almost tempted to sing happy birthday, but I probably won't because.
Don't do it.
The microphones will break. Supervisor Brando?
Yeah, last week got to do some interesting things. I joined Supervisor Mendez to open the Fruit Trail, the annual Fruit Trail, and it was fun. We had, it was sponsored at the Vineyard Farmer's Market on Sean Blackstone, so great time there. And then Chairman Magzig with you, we got to go out and honor some science students at Clovis North who had competed in a competition and done quite well and had won a trophy earlier in that competition. And so it was just great to recognize some of those community folks.
What was amazing about that, I think, I think one of those kids was going to MIT, and one of the ones that was part of the team is going to be a senior next year. And so, and we were quizzing them a little bit about periodic table and different stuff, and they had all the answers. It was pretty amazing. I felt like I was on an episode of Jeopardy, so.
I, I felt like I fit right in.
Very good. All right, and for me, the past two weeks have been pretty amazing. I know we've got Climb to Kaiser coming up and had a great ride out today. There are some county roads, and I know that our Public Works Department's working hard to do some patchwork. And I think this year, is it a hundred and seventy miles of asphalt that's going to be laid out there on our county roads?
Seventy centerline miles, which will be a hundred and forty lane miles.
Hundred and forty lane miles is going to be, going to be constructed, laid out there this year. So really appreciate Public Works, the hard work that they do. And I know when I send messages to them to patch up different areas, they get out on it really quick. So really appreciate all the work that they do, and that's, that's all that I have.
We now move to item number ten, under Board Appointments.
Board Member Brando?
I have none today.
Board Member Mendez?
Yeah, I have one. The Child Care and Development Local Planning Council appoint Isabella Gutierrez to the District Four Provider position.
All right, we've got that. Supervisor Quintero, nothing, and Supervisor Chaco?
I have two, Mr. Chairman, two reappointments. Alyssa Bonner to the Fresno Regional Workforce Development Board, Joint City Council Labor F position for a term ending November one, twenty twenty-five, and to reappoint Lawrence Seymour to the Deferred Compensation Management Council to the At-Large B position for a term ending May one, twenty twenty-seven.
Excellent. And I have one, to the Child Care and Development Local Planning Council, I'd like to appoint Fred Tashamitsu to the vacant District Five seat as a public agency representative, and that is all that I have. Are there any members in the public wishing to comment on any of these appointments we are about to make? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and bring it back to the board for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously.
We now move to item number eleven, Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the board on any matter not on this agenda.
Is there anyone in the public? So I would ask, please step forward and state your name. And again, you've got three minutes just to share with the board items that have not been listed on the agenda, and fifteen minutes per topic.
Good morning, board members. I wanted to bring an issue that I, on Monday, December twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, I sent out an email concerning specific section streets in the outskirts of Selma. I got in contact with Mayor Scott at that time in twenty twenty-one, and he did a GIS mapping. He told me this, these streets are in the hands of the county to contact the board. The streets are East Alsler, Street East Con, East Quarterly, Street S. Leonard Weber, Van Turn, Dinuba Avenue. Streets, they lack streetlights, sidewalks, and it has made it very unsafe for citizens and children. I went out and collected signatures in the area, and people are heavily concerned. And I have a degree, a master's degree in criminology, and a lot of this, in terms of social, this organization is always correlated with an increase in crime. And so I asked that, you know, you guys add this to the budget and help out in those areas for the people. I made copies of documents he, you know, would like to see that, but I also have, you know, it's been, since twenty twenty-two, it's, I mean, we're in twenty twenty-four now, so it's been a couple of years now, and the streets are in the same condition. They need new streets, lights, and there's no sidewalks in those areas. And a lot of the kids going to schools, it's very dangerous for them because a lot of the times they have to walk in the middle of the street, there's a lot of potholes. It's not in good condition, so I would ask, you know, to include that in there and, you know, get some funding going for that specific areas and to help out and revitalize the infrastructure there. That's all.
Very good. Thank you for your comments.
Chairman, could I ask a question?
You can do whatever you want.
Sir, so this is Supervisor Mendez's district, but I was born and raised in Selma, so I do have a question. You had mentioned you had a conversation with the mayor about these streets. Has the Selma City Council heard about this from you and joined this request to get these streets fixed, or?
Well, when I spoke to Mayor Scott at that time, he told me that it falls in county lines and to come and, you know.
Okay.
Bring this issue to the board of supervisors.
All right, all right, but they're aware of it?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And, and sir, you brought some documents with you. If you would like, if you are willing to give those to the clerk, what we can do is, that can be distributed to board members later, and so we can take a look at that if, if you so choose. Thank you.
Good morning, board members, city staff, and my community. I'm here as, my name is Lana, by the way. I'm here as one of the three victims of the violent assault on April twenty-seventh at Porch Fest. I stand before you to ask you for your support against hate crimes in our community. My perceived identity was the reason for why myself and my friends were attacked. We were disappointed in the initial decision made by the DA to drop the hate crime charges. However, we are grateful for Fresno PD as well as DA Craddock for revisiting our case and willing to reconsider the hate crime charges. The trauma sustained from the verbal and physical abuse we endured is something that still greatly affects all three of us. This affects our family, our friends, and our community as well. I'm asking that you stand with victims of violent assaults and hate crimes as there is no room for hate in our community. Thank you.
Good morning, esteemed members. My name is Zara. I'm one of the victims of Porch Fest. There was an incident that occurred on April twenty-seventh at Porch Fest between the hours of three to five PM in District One, which is Ms. Annalisa Pareja's district. I'm pregnant in my second trimester, and I was pregnant during the assault. My two boys were with me, my six-year-old son Noah, and my two, my six-year-old son Adam, and my two-year-old son Noah. My son, Adam, who is six, was assaulted as well. And my two friends, Lana, Mel is not here today because of health issues. I want to thank the police for giving the chance yesterday to sit and amend the errors in the police case report. I would like to also say that they helped include key details that were missing and that were impactful to the case. I would like to echo the statement of the Chief of Police, Paco Baldorama, where he and the police were able to clearly see that all the evidence point towards a hate crime charge. I humbly urge you, esteemed members, to take action that you deem appropriate and do what you deem necessary to help the community, myself, my two children, my friends, to heal from the trauma that was caused during that incident by Francisco Samaniego. The purpose of my visit is to shine a light on the violence committed against people on the receiving end of hate crimes. I'm here to ask for your support. The harm that was caused by Francisco Samaniego goes beyond physical injuries for my kids and for my friends and for the community at large. It has caused a ripple effect in our community. My mental health has suffered. I find myself fearing for my safety, for leaving my house because of how I'm perceived, because of how I dress, that I dressed modestly, and so on and so forth. I'm obligated to emphasize that charging hate crimes as such sends a strong message that we Fresno condemn all forms of hate and discrimination and prejudice against all groups, especially within the minority communities. Not just for the individual victim that it's important, but for the entire community that is affected by hate-motivated violence or discrimination. Additionally, it can deter future hate crimes from occurring by demonstrating the seriousness of which they're treated by our legal system. I'm here to ask for your help, for your support. I thank you so much for your time and consideration, and God bless you.
Seeing no further public comment, I'm going to close the public portion, and clerk?
You may now take closed session public comments for eleven through fif, I'm sorry, twelve through fifteen.
Are there any members in the public wishing to comment on any items that we will be discussing in closed session? Seeing none, I will close the public portion. And counsel, are we able to adjourn now, or are we going to need to reconvene after we are done with closed session?
We will need to reconvene because we may have an announcement following closed session.
All right, then we are now going to enter into closed session, and we will reconvene as soon as we are done so we can report out. Thank you all for being here today. Thank you all for being here today.
All right, we have concluded closed session and for county council to report out from closed session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, under item 12 initiation of litigation, the Board of Supervisors by a five to nothing vote has authorized the initiation of litigation against Sunset Acres LLC and Garpit K. Cosha, property owner of 8853 South Fowler Avenue in Fowler, California, located in District Four, for operating a commercial event center without required land use entitlements in violation of zoning ordinances, nuisance law, and unfair competition law.
All right, thank you. With that being the only item that we needed to report out of closed session, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. We have a motion, we have a motion to second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.